A smaller group of students and the same number of schools. So we're competing, yes, with Farmingdale and Stony Brook, but we're also competing with Hofstra as well as, what's that, Adelphi? You know, and a few others. So what I want you to know is that competition is key. State University of New York is a great value. There's no college like it, I would say, in the state of New York, and certainly not many like it, if any, in the country. And we have a good value proposition. But when the numbers go down, for those wanting to go to college, everybody begins to look for that college student. And we are among the competitors. So our goal for next year is to grow by less than 2% on the undergraduate level. Chiefly through improvements in the retention of students, our intended enrollment for the first, for new first-time and transfer students is effectively flat. We want to hold on to the students that we have. We want to do all that we can to make the experience so attractive and so rewarding. That's why I told you some of the jobs that our students are getting, that our students will stay with us and work hard to graduate within four years. We want to help you to achieve that goal. As of this week, applications among first-time students are down more than 10% as compared to this time last year. Nearly two-thirds of that decline are among EOP candidates. And we think this is a reflection of the change between last year, when more fee waivers were being granted to applicants, and this year, when those waivers, rather, are less available. There are a number of things that play here. When you waive fees and reduce expense, students are more eager to apply, to accept, and to come and accept it. But when those waivers are not there, students look for opportunities elsewhere. And we're also competing with schools, well, not state schools, but private and can discount, I think the term is tuition, almost down to zero. And so we have to offer our students, the men and women who attend our college, an experience unlike any other. And I believe that Old Westbury offers that. I believe that this college offers you an experience that is unlike any other. It's diversity, it's faculty, the best faculty in the country. And some of the things that are upcoming, I was talking to PES, and they have a program that's upcoming, talking about foreign policy in Central and South America, which, when you hear it, will just open your eyes and show you what some of the reasons are for people seeking to run out of South and Central America and head toward brighter opportunities in the United States. And it comes, as a result, we believe, of US fail foreign policy. That's engagement. I've got 60 minutes looking at that right now. That's a powerful program, no place else but Old Westbury. Transfer applications are down also. We do know, however, that our transfer market comes to us very late in the recruitment cycle. So this market segment will take time to develop before we know exactly where we stand. So I just want you to understand that we are in a very tight market, but this is when we do our best, when we work our hardest, and when we get students who really want to be in an exciting campus environment. And the diversity of our campus makes that so. So I hope, and the talent of our faculty makes that so, and the achievement of our students. Our students are doing great things when they leave here. I was at a program last night with the new Attorney General Tish James and with our new state senator out this way, Anna Capton. And it was amazing, several of the men and women who came up to me, one was a trustee of the Old Westbury School District, graduates of the State University College at Old Westbury. Our students are doing good things, and they're in great positions. Let's talk about our graduate degrees. Our college will be offering three new graduate degree programs beginning next fall. That's another exciting achievement of ours, adding graduate programs. We are going to be offering a Master of Science in Data Analytics. And this opens the doors to work in growing areas demanding an ability to make sense of Big Data. I can't make sense of Big Data, but we have people on our campus who can. And there are many people like me in this world who sit at the top of big organizations and small organizations who can't make sense of Big Data. So they need you. And if you get a master's degree in this area, you will be guaranteed almost employment. We have a Master of Science degree in Students with Disabilities, grades one through six, which gives our undergraduate students in childhood education a new pathway to achieving permanent certification. And so this is another area, children with disabilities. I have a grandson who's a special needs child. And to have trained teachers who know how to work with him is something that's going to become more and more necessary in the field of education, particularly in grades one through six. For those of you in education, here, after you finish your bachelor's, it's a way to move into a master's program with an almost guarantee that somewhere in New York State, somewhere on Long Island, somewhere in the five counties of New York City, somewhere in the nation, you will be able to find gainful employment. And we have an online Master of Science degree in Accounting, online. This is the college's first-ever online degree program. This program brings online the successful graduate accounting degree offered in a traditional classroom format. This is the first time since 2004. And with these introductions, these new programs, SUNY Old Westbury now offers 21 different graduate programs, including mental health counseling, forensic accounting, adolescent education, and a liberal studies degree. I want all of our students and faculty and staff to consider Old Westbury for graduate study. We have the programs that they've grown. And we built these programs based on a need in the market and a need for men and women who come out of an environment where they learn to respect one another based on our common humanity. The world needs more men and women like you. We have a new academic relationship that I want to tell you about. The college has agreed with SUNY Downstate Medical Center on three different memoranda of understanding that will secure places for our graduates in Downstate's Graduate Physicians Assistant Physical Therapy and Nursing Programs. The numbers agreed to are not large, less than 25 overall right now. But we expect that knowing these seats are available will serve as a significant incentive for our students to excel. If you are interested in becoming a physician's assistant, physical therapist, or a nurse with a bachelor's degree registered, these programs are for you. Downstate is an excellent place to study, and we've developed a meaningful relationship. 25 slots right now, but if we fill them quickly with interested students, that number will grow. And the health professions need you. Northwell is one of the largest employers in the state. And men and women who have these degrees and others will be in big demand. They are, the last time Dr. O'Sullivan, they told us they're hiring, how many people a day? Saw him, he was gone. Over 200 people a day. This is very important, and I hope our students are listening. And these pathways will help us in the medical field, the health professions, and we also have scholarships that are available. One of our trustees from our foundation has been working with the faculty and helping students prepare for the MCAT exam as well as others. These opportunities are available. They are limited, but they are available. And the more we take advantage of them, the more it will grow. We've been raising dollars, knocking on doors on behalf of the State University College at Old Westbury. It's a great place. Don't blow the opportunity. Ask the questions. Push us. Our foundation has provided scholarships, and it will provide more. It has provided faculty research dollars. I saw them today, they have been awarded. These things we do because we believe in who we are at Old Westbury. We offer some other things. The Panther Pantry. I'm proud that SUNY Old Westbury was able to open Panther Pantry, our new food pantry. We opened it last semester. Issues of food insecurity among college students is a growing concern across America, and SUNY Old Westbury is not immune to those issues. When I was in college, I was hungry all the time. It's just okay. Every now and then we'd get a care package from home. The care package lasted all of 15 minutes because students from all over the dorm would raid. And whatever your mother, your aunt, your grandmother, your church, your sending up, whatever they sent you was gone in a matter of moments. And many of our students work every day. We are hybrid. We have students who are young, we have some students who are not so young. We have students who are single and kind of free, but we have students who are married and have families. We have graduate students who work every day and then come to school. And many of our students, as well as our staff, have issues with food insecurity. This is not only an Old Westbury issue, this is a national issue. There were more than 100 visits to the pantry in the fall, including visits from students who are homeless or those who are parents with young children. Thanks to the School of Arts and Sciences Assistant Dean Krista Tarone for her ongoing leadership with the pantry. Krista, if you're here, thank you, I can't see you. Thanks also to the students associated with the Accounting Society, Student Government Association, First Year Experience, Alanza Latina and the Public Health Club, who have all run food drives, applaud them also. And lastly, thanks to the student winners of the National Up to Us Student Debt Competition. We won that, didn't we? We were the outstanding leaders in that. We won the competition, and those students donated a portion of their monetary award to support the Panther Food Pantry. Again, a round of applause. The college is also now home to a new Interfaith Center. This is located on the second floor of the Student Union in a former computer lab. And this space offers students, faculty, and staff an area for quiet reflection, for programming on issues of religion and culture, and a place to go to interact with those who share your beliefs and those whose beliefs might follow a different path. I break it down and say you go up there and pray around finals time. But it's more important than that. It's a place for quiet reflection. Many of us need to take a break sometime because, knowing the faculty as I do, and saying to them over and over, don't dumb down any courses. Take no privileges. Make our students work. And when the faculty gives you that reading list and tells you how many papers you've got to produce and tells you what kind of grade point average you need to keep across the year to get a passing grade, that could bring any man or woman to their needs. You need a place to reflect. Emotional and mental instability is big among college students. Go to the Interfaith Center. Talk to men and women who may have a different point of view. There may be someone there who comes by, they don't even believe in God. But they might just need the peace that comes as a result of being in a place where we reflect. Use the Interfaith Center. It's very important, and it takes advantage of our diversity. God has found in many houses and called by many names. And if you don't believe in anybody, please believe in yourself, that you can do anything. That will help you. Believe it will help you not only in college, it will help you beyond college. We got some capital projects that I want to tell you about. A new STEM Center. Now I want to tell you this. I've been here a long time now. Under this administration, we built five new dormitory buildings. We built a new student union. We built a new headquarters for the police department. We built a new academic complex. And we renovated our campus center. Looking at a faculty member who was head and lead on that for us. And now we've got one more big project we've got to complete for our students and our faculty. And that's our new science, technology, engineering, and math centers. Still, we've got three proposals. One, we're going to renovate our existing science building. And then we've got a cube-shaped addition to the front of the current building, or an addition that wraps around the two sides of the current building, or an addition off the front of the building that creates a courtyard between the new and the existing structures. Whichever one we choose that best suits our campus needs is going to cost us $130 million. Take a deep breath, just say that, $130 million. That's a lot of money. We've done it before, and we can do it again. We have to keep our minds set and focused. This adds to the life of the State University of New York. Students who graduated already, the value of their decree will go up. And even if you get out of here before that building is up, your degree will be worth much more. Because it offers all of our students, not just those in the sciences, all of our students greater value for the dollars and a larger and much more powerful educational experience. I've been out knocking on doors. I stand on the street corner with my squeegee and my wack wooden chills. I do whatever I have to do to get this money. And I want you to know, beloved, that that means we have to travel to Albany. The governor will be here Thursday, by the way. Going to have a press conference on the tax cap or something, I don't know. But he'll be here. We've got to go to Albany, we've got to go everywhere to try to raise this money. Private, I've sat down with Phil Annaphus and others because we want this for you, the students and the faculty here at Old Westbury. We've been working, I got the staff working, Dr. Edwards, Azario. We're all working, trying to get, Mike, we're all trying to get this money. Now, the new academic building, let me tell you what happened. We were working and crying and pleading, and there was one resource that we used. The chancellor showed up one day on campus, and we announced that to the faculty. The chancellor was walking across the campus, and the faculty ambushed him, encircled him, and said, "We need this new academic building." Do you know, right after that, we got approval? Thank you, faculty. And thanks to the students who were there, advocating on our behalf. Some of you know senators, assembly persons. Some of you may even have inroads into the highest levels of the executive branch. Use them. Speak to people. Talk to them, and it makes a difference. The campus library project is complete. You got to punch this item here and there. And everything I've heard from students and faculty thus far has been good. Use that library, it's beautiful. It's a big difference from the library when I first arrived. It is really nice. And respect the library as I ask you to respect the campus. Don't just leave trash around. You see something, say something. Hey buddy, pick up that cup. Use a coaster. See, that's what I'm saying, I'm telling you, treat the campus with respect. And if you can't respect the campus, go home. Get out. We don't need you either. Don't let people destroy your home. Many of you have heard, as I wrap this up, that I'll be retiring from the presidency in August of 2020. I'll go on study leave January of 2020 in preparation to return to the faculty. Not quite sure whether it'll be in American Studies, a first degree for a first-year program, I'm working on that. I've been here this year, September, 20 years. The average shelf life for a president is about six or seven years. So I've already outlived three presidents. The point here is, it has taken a long time for us to get to this point because we have so far to come. But I believe we have a despride accord among the faculty, a spirit that's high, we've got a great cabinet, and we've got wonderful students. And as a result, we've built a college that is competitive with any in this region, and I would argue with any in this state. So I want you to know that it's time for me to go. Not because I want to go or because I'm tired of doing it. It's just time for new hands, new eyes, fresh ideas, and someone who has the ability to stand on the foundation that we build and go forward. We've got great people who will still be in place after I'm gone. And they'll be able to work with you. And I've had to live through some of our great people who have been here leaving us, retiring. I think of Dr. Henry Teal, a great scientist, someone who brought research dollars. But he was working very closely with Doug Quarles, who is now an assistant provost here at our school. Dr. O'Sullivan, who is the provost, has been at the college for 40 years or more. Or more. Or more. And he came out of the faculty. This is a great place. It's a unique experience. I told you, Tom Magid, Doug, he's helped us to really lay out a plan for redeveloping our campus center and our new academic building. Online courses, witchcraft, FM. These are wonderful things. Staff, pack, they're not retiring, you know. This is amazing. So, and the buildings and grounds crew, maintenance, these are great people, police. And by the way, I don't give what the state says, marijuana will not be accepted on this campus. Let's just get that out of the way right now. You know, but listen, why, why, Dr. Fisher, you so strict on this? Everybody in the world is getting down, they're getting high, you know what I mean? You know, what's to say, did you smoke marijuana when you were in college? No comment. But my point is, when I arrived, there was a real problem with drug use on this campus. Not that I was trying to be dictatorial or better higher than doubt, it's just that you can't have a safe community and have people strung high on drugs just any time. Alcohol's a big issue. So, you know, just like alcohol is legal, if you go off campus, you're sober up before you get back in there. We can't do that. It would be harmful to our campus. It will create, I believe, a lawless situation which I don't want the police to have to deal with, and I don't want our students to be impacted by. So that kind of ends my report to you generally about what's going on and how I feel. I think one of the reasons why I want to stay on the teachers is because I don't want to leave. There is a love affair that I've developed across the years. And there's some things that I want to say, I can say as a professor that I can't say as a president. And even though Michael would say you said some of them anyway. But I do believe that if you just capture that spirit, students especially, from the time that you're here. Our foundation has grown. When I arrived, our foundation was under investigation. Now, when I went to our last foundation meeting, we had a full table with alumni who are now part of our foundation, movers and shakers on Long Island. I'm going tomorrow or Thursday to get one of the 50 top movers and shakers on Long Island. Or me, but it's not me, it's you. It's what we've been able to do together. And so I'm feeling good about Old Westbury. We've got some competition out there trying to get the students, but we'll get them. We'll get them online, we'll get them in graduate, pre-degree programs, and we'll get students who want a different experience. You have any bumps along the way, of course you do. But we'll overcome those, we'll deal with them. I pledge to you, as long as I'm here in this president's chair, we will not dodge any issue. We'll face it head-on. And we'll meet the challenge with a sense of confidence that everything's going to be all right. I want to thank my chief of staff, Miss Mona Rankin. Why don't you give her a round of applause? And all the office staff in the president's office. So now I'm going to stop and open the floor for questions. Hi.
I have a question for my first lady. After the sudden death of Khalil Hill.
Khalil Hill. Do I think that my letter to the student body was adequate?
Yes.
Why, yes? Oh, you think you, oh, yes. Nobody mad about nothing? Ibrahim, I'm not calling on you at all.
Hi, my name's Lawrence Hagen. I'm the vice president of communications for the SGA. And I was wondering, with the growing number of student performing groups and growing interest in the students for music and arts, is there any push for a possible arts or music program in the future?
Yes, sir. There are several things that I wanted to do that I've not been able to do since I've been here. It's not for lack of trying. One is to get a separate state-of-the-art facility for our childcare center. For our childcare center, we're working on that. Two is to get faculty housing so that we can not only attract, but maintain faculty who want to come but who cannot afford to live on Long Island. We lose a lot of very talented people because they just, at the state salary, all of us who work here know about state salaries. State salary, they can't afford housing on the northern shore of Long Island, or sometimes even close. And the third thing is to reestablish the American Dance and Theater Program that we have. One of the greatest ways to take advantage of our diversity is through arts and culture. You know, when the Latino students, Latino students on this campus... You know, when, uh, the Latino students, Latina students on this campus, when salsa is played, and whether you're Asian, African-American, whatever you may be, if you can dance that music, man, that puts you real close to people. If you can, uh, see a play on the stage, you've got a great facility over in McGuire Bay with an orchestra pit even. That, that, that draws you in. You know, that's why Shakespeare will never grow old. He'll never grow old because he draws you, it's a fellow, it's a Midsummer's Night, whatever it is. It's, it's, uh, where literature and, and poetry and, and music, yes, that's the one thing that I'm, it used to be, but I haven't been able to recapture it. It's cost a lot in those dollars. But if there's anything that I would really want to see, whether I can do it or the person who comes after me, it would be that addition. You know, and, um, and I think we have, our students have so much more flavor to add to it because we're so diverse. You go to other campuses, they have these huge performing arts facilities. But their, but their campus is so homogeneous that they don't add any, you know, no spice. And one of the things that makes us, you know, so different, we got a lot of spice here on this campus. We got a lot of flavor, a lot of sassiness, a lot of vibrancy, a lot of color, if you will. And we need to take advantage of it. So, yes, sir. But I just, you know, um, you know, I'm, I'm, you know, we, we had, we had a shot. We were going to get Winston and, uh, the Jazzling Center Orchestra, you know, but getting them out here and paying for it, two different things. They're willing to come, you know, but, uh, we got, we did have that equimieri out here, and that was great. And that's one of the things that should benefit all of us. Whenever we see a musical or a dance experience, I don't care where it comes from, we should try to go because it helps us to appreciate the varying cultures and the languages and, and all that. So, yes, sir. Anything you can do to keep, keep asking that question? You know, if you ask long enough and get on somebody's nerves, they'll find to do something. Anything, uh, no, Ibrahim, I'm sorry, I'm not going to call on you. Yes, Ibrahim.
I want to thank you especially with the very good news for the faculty part that you're going to work on that housing. And, and thanks to Lord for bringing the, my students, to bring the issue of, of performing arts, music. I still, uh, those music players in my ear, the saxophone and the people who were here, uh, it's great to go back to our origin as well. Um, we have a lot of room for improvement, and I want to thank you for initiating some of them. But I want to see more in technology, I want to see more in the student, uh, public and instruction, or whatever we can. You know, I know it's kind of annoying sometimes, my questions, that how can we, you know, invest in, in technology, how can we invest on those things that, uh, my students just brought up to you and, and not to go another ten years, but just somehow the short term? Thank you.
One of the things, um, thanks, you know, I'm just sort of kidding with you, but a lot of this has to do with dollars and cents. Ladies and gentlemen, I would respond immediately to American Dance and Theater. Wouldn't be a question if I had the dollars and cents, I'd do it. And in many instances, I step out on faith. You know, the man who's been running or the woman who's been running, and they get to a cliff and everybody's telling them on the way which way to turn, which way to go, how to do. They get to a cliff and there's nothing out there. And they say, "Well, go on and take this step because you will be instructed on how to fly." Well, sometimes I take that step, and I follow, no problem. But there's a certain practicality. You don't take on any big project without first counting the cost. And, uh, we improved, we invested four or five million dollars right away in technology when I arrived. And it's changed so rapidly over the course of these years that we have to find more dollars. And the state is cutting back on the dollars. Private philanthropy is hard to come by. That's why you find us not here, out in the street, not in the on doors, talking to people. Sometimes it's fun because the private philanthropists, people with money, you know, invite you to very nice restaurants, that's very nice. And they say, "Wow," and they pick up the check and the bill, and we say, "That's great." But they don't send the check after that. So, we need, uh, we need dollars. And I'm convinced that the best way to get dollars is through excellent performance of our students. And highlighting the accomplishments of our faculty. If we talk about what our faculty achieves, we see one of our faculty members written up for a study that she did about bees. That made the Times and a number of other major public, that's big. So when we go to the National Science Foundation looking for money, it's there sometimes. Students who go out and get jobs and they work for an assembly person, they work in the controller's office, or they work for A B C, or they, 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 uh, work in a major hospital. So, "Where did you get your training?" "Well, I did my undergrad and worked at State University at Old Westbury." Whoa. So when they hear that name enough from excellent people, when we go to look for dollars, sometimes they're there. So many of our issues have to do with drawing dollars here. Over the years, we have been able to use somebody who can knock on doors, Dr. O'Sullivan knows, we used to go to Albany together, get in, and make a presentation on behalf of this school. That's how we were able to revive our college. That's how we succeed. And so you need dynamic men and women like yourselves to be out there proud of who we are and what we do. Do we have our issues? Ibrahim is right, yes, we do. And we meet them head on as best we can. But thank God we've been successful. And, uh, we will continue to work and, and move forward. Yes, sir. Did you graduate already?
Probably graduated.
Oh, yes, we're.
I was just wondering, did they kind of run the science building? Would you have been able to do anything about the sidewalks? Because they're all broken and you've drawn up to them.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, did you guys hear that in the back? We need to repave all the roads. But we'll take a look at that particular places where you drive, you know, and, uh, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We met at the Viscardi Center. Yeah. See, that's what I mean about us. Viscardi Center invited me to come over and give an address or a talk. I think it was for your graduation. And I gave the talk, and, uh, she came out upstairs and she's going to Old Westbury. Wow. Now you've been to Old Westbury, graduated, and are in graduate school. That, to me, is the excellence of our school. Glad to see. Yes, sir.
Um, yeah, I'm working with the university to see if I can. Um, I don't know. They make, uh, they make it very, uh, the campus very accessible to me. If I'm in the, you know, restaurant, that. Um, I was just finding that you can ask to make the more, the more accessible. I just don't myself, uh, for, uh, community students who I know may have issues.
They are our plans. You know, they say that the road to heaven is paved with good intentions. The intentions are good, it's the money that's short. We will do all that we can to make our school more accessible to all of our students. And I don't know any other way to say that except to just say it that way. We will look for opportunities to improve sidewalks, and we will look for opportunities to, to make travel around the campus a lot easier for all of us. But we are a school that prides ourselves on its diversity, whether it's race, ethnicity, religion, language, or whether people, people are differently able. We want to be the school where people make a decision to come because we are trying to address the kinds of issues that you, that you raise. I got, Ed, I got a call from a, a person in Nassau, the Bahamas. They said they started school up in Camden, and they got, uh, a few hours in the family situation. So they want to come back to school online. So can they do that in the School of Professional Studies?
It's possible. We have to look into, settle, I sort of wondered if they're here at the home. But that's less than they do, I mean, I would say, and then, you know, to be able to be, what requirements is still high to fulfill, or whether you're satisfied?
Satisfied, okay. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you for your attention. Oh, you have a question, somebody? Yes, again, thank you.
Um, I have a lot of issues that need to be addressed.
Because there are a lot of issues on campus that need to be addressed, how do I go about prioritizing what needs to be addressed first? The first priority for me, students. And their ability to access what they need in terms of their educational goals. The second priority for me would be faculty, to make sure that they are able to address themselves to the best of their ability to the needs of the students. All right? So my focus is really on making sure we have strong faculty, a solid curriculum, and that students have what they need. Not what the students think they need or dictate what they need, but what we know they need in terms of completing an academic program that will help them to be successful. So that was, that's how I prioritize. Yes, sir.
A non-academic related question. About sports, do you think in the future we can see a wrestling team?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I got a grandson now who's on the wrestling team in junior high school. Think he won one match. But, uh, yes, that seems like something we could do. We got to find a coach and, uh, see how many, you know, of our students are interested in it. But that seems like something we could do. You know, it's Division III. Well, you know, he looks like he can do it. I want to give him a conference. One more.
You mentioned building a new student union and also a new university. So I would say, just at least one example of a plan that we have to have for the resident halls or if we have to expand a little more, hopefully, and to keep going with the summer.
Uh, first of all, the five residence halls we built are how old? Eight years old? Fifteen, are they? Uh, fifteen years old. So the five, we've already, we've already built five new residence halls. And, uh, hopefully, we're, we're trying to maintain them and keep them up to speed as best we can. The old residence halls, over where Academic Village was, well, most of those are leased out to the, uh, New York, uh, the, uh, New York Institute of Technology. I would love to build more residence halls for more students who want to live on the campus. Absolutely. But in order to do that, I have to find a developer or a plan such that the cost of living in those new dorms would help keep Old Westbury at a good value. Go on.
Um, I question what you would be doing with the old, we have a plan to renovate the mold epidemic.
Which halls?
The five residential halls. One of these halls was having issues that are not being attended. Such as there are holes inside of some of the roofs. A lot of the showers in there have flooded over and people have to just stand in the water. And there was also a mold epidemic last year.
The mold epidemic I know about. And the mold epidemic came as the increased humidity over a past, over a season prior. If I did that to you while you were asking me a question, you would think that was very rude. The mold epidemic, the mold epidemic is one that was caused by increased humidity from the past season. It's one that was not unique to Old Westbury. It was at Columbia University, it was at other schools. I'm not using that as an excuse. But what I'm saying is we are on top of that with dehumidifiers, with cleaning the dorms, with keeping up with it. It was not expected, but we do not expect that it will happen again. And if it does, we plan to be very much prepared for it. Some of the other things that you raised, I'm not really familiar with. So I will be asking questions about the overflowing showers and the holes in the roofs and things like that, and that will become a priority for us to fix because it takes away from the comfort of our student bunch. Thank you very much. Have a great afternoon. See you on campus, and I appreciate the time and attention that you've given to us this afternoon.